Okay, it's really quiet, so I'll call our meeting to order. Everyone's thinking, okay, it's time to start. I appreciate everyone being here this evening. We do have a quorum of our board team. That covers item one. Item two, we're honored to have Scott Bradford, the new senior pastor at First United Methodist Church. He said we're breaking in him right, breaking him in right by asking him to lead us in our invocation, so thank you for being here.
You'll join me in prayer. Almighty God, we give you thanks and praise, oh Lord, for the work of this school board and all of the educators and professionals, and we pray, oh Lord, as they begin to prepare to go back to this school year that you would just put in them a good spirit, ready for this year, and we pray for the students and their parents, and we ask, oh Lord, that you would just encourage in them to this to be a year of learning. We pray for the partnerships that this school system has with the community and for organizations that surround it and help to empower kids to be better in life. And so we pray, Lord, you're just blessing on all aspects of education this year that we might make a difference in this world. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. It's very nice to meet you. Thanks for being here. Our next items are pledges. I'll lead us in our pledges, if everyone can stand up.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Good evening and welcome. As president of the Board of Trustees, the San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. I also welcome those of you who might be watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. As you also may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at an earlier board, pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on each one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda this evening. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I'll ask our audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of the SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape may adequately reflect our proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking, and also ask that I remind my fellow board team members to please turn off or silence your cellphones at this time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. I thank you for taking the time to join us here this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our school district. I probably should turn off my cellphone. So, we have our next items, recognitions, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Detloff, and he's going to start off our recognitions.
Mr. Lehman, members of the board, it's my privilege to introduce to you Mr. Derek Jackson, our new director of communications. So Derek, if you'll stand up, and I will turn it over to Mr. Jackson in just about two minutes, but we are certainly excited that he has joined the SAISD team. In fact, he's had a big few days here. Last weekend, Mr. Jackson and his family moved to San Angelo, and he will have three children in our school system. Brielle, Brooke, and Bryce will join the SAISD team very shortly, so we're excited about that, and his wife, Venetia. So we're excited to have the Jacksons in San Angelo, and we look forward to his specialization in communication. Derek has a wide experience in the area of communication. His expertise and exposure to really high stakes public relations will serve him well coming from Frisco ISD, a school district with about nine high schools and maybe 60,000 students. So he certainly has exposure to high stakes public relations. He was also responsible for mass communication in the district and all video production. He has helped produce and edit multiple television shows, including "Sports Stars of Tomorrow" by Pat Summerall, that name rings a bell with many of us, also Chevrolet's Race Week, hosted by Scott Murray, and Taste of the Southwest by Wolfgang Puck. SAISD warmly welcomes Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, President Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. Tonight, we honor members of the local media who have been strong partners with San Angelo ISD over the past year. These distinguished honorees understand that they have the power to shape community attitudes about public schools, a responsibility that they take very seriously. San Angelo ISD's media honor roll is a way for us to recognize fair and balanced reporting about our school district. Each of tonight's guests are strong advocates of the district, our children, and our educators. So without further ado, I would like to introduce you to tonight's award recipients. And we're going to start with radio. From Foster Communications, we have Fred Key, Rick Mantooth, and Jeff Rotman. And then they're going to be inverted. Let me get that for you. We'll do a group photo here. We're going to have Rick there. Then we're going to do Jeff. Yeah, if you guys will just be patient for us here, we'll get a nice group photo. And then we're going to have our print media. Unfortunately, Michelle's not here tonight, but it's with, she's with the Standard Times, Michelle Guyton. We're going to get this to her. She's on vacation this week. And lastly, in television, we have David Wagner, Randy Ward, and Cody Adams. We're going to have Mr. Wagner here representing for the entire group there at KLST. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, of course. Thank you so much. We'll have you go across. Jeff, you go across the dice there real quick. Thank you, guys.
We appreciate that. That covers our recognitions. Our next items I referred to briefly in earlier, and that's anyone wishing to make comments to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening. If anyone wishes to do that, now would be a great time to come forward. I see no one wishing to do that, so we'll move to item six, which is the approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
We have a motion for Mr. Parker and a second for Mr. Gallegos to approve the minutes from our June 12, 2017 finance, our special meeting, as well as our finance and pre-agenda workshop meeting, and also our June 19 regular board meeting. Are there any comments or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is, I think we have a report on academic progress, and Ms. Hollihan's going to help us with that. Thanks, Shelley.
Thank you. I wanted to take this opportunity to share with the Board of Trustees and our community an exciting partnership that began two years ago with the Contra Valley Workforce. Last year, the Contra Valley Workforce wrote and received an externship grant, which provided opportunities for teachers to go to participating employers and see how their course aligns the skills needed to what was happening in the business world. The first year, the Contra Valley Workforce placed 36 of our teachers in businesses, and that number increased to 66 teachers this summer. Teachers shadow an employer or someone in their business for two and a half days, as well as write lesson plans that are implemented throughout the, in the classroom throughout the year. Teachers participating in this endeavor are usually our middle school and high school, or that's where they've come from, but after visiting with the workforce board, they would take our elementary teachers also. As you can see, we have a number of businesses that have participated in this intern, externship. We just wanted to say that we appreciate the partnerships with the Contra Valley Workforce and the opportunity to work with the Contra Valley businesses.
You did say it's going to be short and sweet. Any questions for Shelley? Thanks. Yeah, we certainly appreciate those businesses and their support, and also the support of the workforce in organizing all that, so thanks, Shelley. Okay. Our next item is our consent items. Do we have a motion to approve consent items A through F?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Dr. Kingman and a second from Mr. Dindell. Consent item A is considered superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year. We did have some additional ones that I believe Matt left at our places, so y'all might review that just in case we'd seen all the others previously. Item B is to consider bids for child nutrition department for 2017, 2018. Those are paper and chemical bids. Item C is to consider bid number 17-010-08-17. That's for athletic equipment. Item D is to consider bid number 17-007-07-20. That's our student accident insurance. Item E is to ratify administration's action in sale of properties. These are properties that we sell in conjunction with the city that are delinquent in taxes. It allows us to get those properties back on our tax roll. And item F is to consider our board meeting dates and activities for the next school year beginning in August. Do we have any comments or questions concerning, from our board team concerning's A through F? Do we have any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item nine, consider bills, accounts, and financial statements for June of 2017.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindell and a second from Mr. Parker to consider our bills accounts, to approve our bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of June 2017. Are there questions or comments from our board team?
Mr. Lehman, just a note to the public watching on Channel 4, all the reports that are contained within this agenda item can be found if you go to our website, saisd.org, and the subtitle, click on the district tab, and then under the district tab, you'll see financial transparency, and all these reports that we've reviewed in the pre-agenda meeting are there to be found and perused if you'd like.
Thanks, Mr. Dindell. Other comments or questions concerning the approval of our bills, accounts, and financial statements for June? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing, indicate by saying no. Our next, our motion passes. Our next item is to consider the proposed amendment to the district's official budget, and these are changes to our general fund. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindell and a second from Mr. Gallegos to consider the proposed amendments to the district's official budget. These are changes that, there are no monetary differences, just us moving around money from one fund to another in preparation for our audit. Do we have any other questions or comments concerning our proposed amendment? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 11, which is to consider our childcare services. This is just a hearing, and Ms. Hollihan's going to help us with that.
Thank you. This is the first of the, of two required public hearings from the San Angelo YMCA After-School Program. The YMCA After-School Program gives parents peace of mind by providing supervised childcare for their children by a professional staff, team of staff. The aftercare, ooh, the after-school program practices four core values: caring, honesty, respect, and responsibility in all of their activities, indoors and outdoors, homework time, arts and crafts, games, and much more. A healthy snack is provided. This program is licensed through the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services. The YMCA program provides after-school care on all of our campuses. If you'll remember, they picked up at Reagan last year and actually took them to the YMCA, but this year, there will be after-school care on Reagan. So they provide after-school care on all of our elementary campuses, including our Head Start campuses. Registration open July 1 at the YMCA. We are grateful to the YMCA for providing this continuous partnership that is a valuable benefit for our students, parents, and community. Are there any comments?
Any question?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
On the flyer you have here, Shelley, it does say pickup is available at Reagan and Wall?
It does say that. The, that's what we receive from the YMCA, but when I called them today, because I knew they provided childcare this summer on Reagan, when I called them this morning, they said that they will be providing childcare at Reagan this next year.
Thanks, Drew. That, yeah, that's a clarification, and thanks, Shelley, for that. And certainly, the YMCA's been a great partner for the school district and provides quality after-school care for our students. So thank you for working on that and setting all that up, and certainly thanks to the Y for continuing to be a great partner for the school district. So we don't have to take any board action there. That's just a hearing. We'll have our second hearing at our regular board meeting in August. Our next item is to consider, item 12, to consider San Angelo Independent School District's early Head Start and Head Start cost of living adjustment, and Ms. Taunton's here to help us with that. How are you?
I'm good. How are you? Good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. I'm here today to present and seek approval for a 1% COLA increase, which is a cost of living adjustment that is given from the Office of Head Start. In May, May 12 of this, of this year, we received a program instruction stating that we were eligible to apply for the opportunity to receive additional funding for a cost of living adjustment in the amount of 1% for each of our respective programs, and these funds are to be used permanently, to permanently increase the base funding salary for, excuse me, for our staff. In Head Start, that amount would be $28,204.13, with $18,566.36 going to personnel, and $6,815.77 go in towards fringe benefits, and there will be a remainder of $2,822, and that will be applied to our classroom supply line item. In early Head Start, the 1% COLA increase is $10,475, with $7,543.91 being in personnel, and $2,535.82 in fringe benefits, with a remainder of $395 that would be applied to classroom supplies.
Thanks, Rachel. Any questions for Rachel concerning our federal increase in pay for, a COLA increase for our Head Start and early Head Start employees? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the 1% cost of living allowance request for the SAISD Head Start and early Head Start.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindell and a second from Mr. Parker. Any other board comments or questions for Rachel or any board comments? It's kind of, seems like we're, we go up 1% for them, and then we're raising our teachers, and then we have a hard time hiring at their entry level, so we're just getting further and further apart. But it is what it is, I guess. Any comments from anyone in the audience? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thank you, Rachel. Our next item is item 13, to consider liability and auto insurance coverage. Dr. Bright's going to help us with that item. Thanks, Jeff.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lehman and board. As we discussed in pre-agenda, most all of our legal liability and auto insurance has been held by a group called the Texas Association of Public Schools, acronym is TATS. We knew there were some indications of problems back in February, but in June of this summer, they decided that they're going to close the fund and no longer offer insurance to school districts and community colleges, which left about 200 of us entities looking for, scrambling for coverage for the next school year. Luckily, we received four proposals to replace the insurance that we are going to lose on September 1. We did a thorough review of at least three of them that we felt were pretty strong. One was from Trident, which is a public, private insurance company, they're very strong, well-recognized around the nation. We received a proposal from Texas Association of School Boards, which y'all are very familiar with, and then we received a third proposal from the Property Casualty Alliance of Texas, acronym is PCAT. And our familiarity with PCAT is that it has a tie with Edwards Risk Management, which is our workers' compensation insurance carrier. So we thoroughly reviewed them, compared them head to head. It's not apples to apples. You have to look at deductibles, you have to look at aggregate limits, but when we, when all was said and done, the smoke cleared, we felt like the PCAT offered the best value for the district with a premium there that's outlined in the board agenda item. Now, tonight, if you don't mind, I'd like to invite Rick Edwards up here. Y'all may remember Rick. He spoke to you before about workers' comp. He's also, he speaks your language because he's former board president in Marble Falls ISD, so he understands where you're coming from, and he can certainly share more about PCAT and answer any questions you have about the coverage that they're offering the district for next school year. So, Rick, thank you for coming.
Good evening, President Lehman and members of the board. It was hard to sit back there while I go and not say aye. And I appreciate your introduction to the community and the board, something that we can all take back to, that it is truly a meeting of the board, but we welcome public input. So thank you for your service and your dedication to the children. What is our connection with San Angelo ISD? It's a passion and love for kids, and it gives me chills bumps when I think about what our role is. We're talking about the need for insurance, but really, San Angelo has not had the need for insurance except for a few fender benders. Now, I won't ask you any of you have teenage kids that might also have that same need, but the district does have protection in the way of educator legal liability, general liability, even though under general liability, we have the sovereign immunities that provides us protection that hopefully we don't need, but is there in case we do. We have cyber liability, which is something fairly new, and you probably read about that often. Unfortunately, there's a tax on our school district systems, there's been one, even some of the data here at San Angelo ISD through the School Board Association, but one that gives you protection should you have a breach in your cyber area. The auto liability is covered, as well as some of your employment practices liability. The coverage you have or will have September 1 will be as strong, if not stronger than what you had that is expiring. I congratulate the staff because I know you don't have a full-time risk manager, and I know there's many that take pride in delivering risk management daily, including the teachers and administrators and other staff members, auxiliary staff members. And it takes a village, it takes a team to have the success you have had. Like I said, when I saw the claims reports that Jeff sent, I was like, well, where are the claims? And it was just a bunch of blank pages, for five years of blanks. I was like, are you sure about that? You don't, aren't aware of anything? So I commend you as a, as a board and the leadership for doing things right, following your policies and procedures. Documentation and being aware of what's going on in the school district leads to the success you've had in the claims experience, because claims experience equals premiums and contributions. So therein turn is the dollars that you're saving to return back to the classroom for education. The added benefits you get from PCAT, and Frisco happens to be a PCAT member and has a Bus Driver of the Year program. You ever remember that? And the praises that you get. We recognize a staff member who is nominated by other peers about being outstanding, not just a bus driver, but also a great person. And it will, again, send chills up your spine when you see, as you know, these bus drivers often don't do it for the money, they do it, again, for the love and passion they have for kids. And so we have problems like that. There's some driver training programs, as well as some professional education programs for your teachers and administrators, all to, to ensure that we surround you with the protection you need in insurance, but also the protection and education awareness and training. You have outlined there the, the coverages, the deductibles, and I'll be happy to answer any questions relative to that, but be, I caution you, if you ask a lot of those questions, we don't want to have claims. So I can privately visit with you about that if you need to as well. But thank you for the time, and we look forward to the partnership with San Angelo ISD.
Any questions for Mr. Edwards?
Yeah, thank you for your comment about bus drivers. We're really proud of our bus driver team. They're, in most cases, they're the first person that our students interact with each day, so it's really important that we have a positive influence from that particular person, and we're really proud of our bus drivers, so thanks for mentioning them.
Thank you. Any other comments concerning our approval, the selection of our Property and Casualty Alliance of Texas to provide coverages outlined in their proposal? If not, I'll entertain a motion?
I think a motion to approve selection of Property Casualty Alliance of Texas to provide the coverages outlined in their proposal and authorize district administration to finalize the contracts for coverage during 27, 2018 school year.
We have a motion? Very well. Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Ms. Maazel Flint. Do we have any other questions or comments? Any other public comment? Thanks, Jeff and team, for y'all's work on this. It's always a big surprise when someone cancels, you know, lets you know that they're canceling coverage, you know, so...
And by the nature of this type of coverage, it's a one-year deal, so we'll have to look at it each year.
Right. Okay.
Sorry, I'm not an insurance person, but are old policy?
Do they have an umbrella? Or is that, do we need an umbrella?
I'll let Rick answer that.
Is it all covered? I see it's delineated, but...
Yep.
Could repeat your question.
Is there any role for an umbrella policy when it's delineated out like this to...
There's really not. You have the $1 million combined single limit on your auto. That's somewhat of an umbrella on the auto. And then you increase the educator legal liability from a million to 3 million, which, again, is an area of exposure that you could see claims, and just with defense costs is what they are today, is the need to really raise that limit, and so those are the two really umbrellas, but they're individual on their lines of business.
Rick, when is our liability ever going to be more than what's limited by the Texas tort claims act as far as with automobiles?
When you go outside of state, if you had outside of state travel, you would be subject to the limits of the state for which you were traveling. That's about the only incident you would have.
And what is our, what is the limit now?
A hundred thousand... Hundred thousand, three hundred thou, a hundred per incident, or per person, three hundred thousand per occurrence, and then a hundred thousand on bodily injury. That's a state cap on auto.
So a half million dollars total?
No, the three hundred is the total.
Right, okay.
Yeah, the three hundred.
Okay. All right. Other questions, Max, anyone? Okay, thank you. Any other board comments or questions? If not, any public comment? If not, I'll call the motion. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Okay. Our next item is to set a public meeting date and consider approval of the maximum tax rate used for publication of the required tax notice. And Dr. Bright's going to cover that briefly.
Sure. This is just kind of starts the process of the truth in taxation items that we have to go through each year. And so this sets the maximum tax rate that we're going to publish in the newspaper, dollar four M and O, eighteen cents on the debt service. We cannot go above that, but we can certainly go below it. But I don't want to get anybody's hopes up. But this is, this is the information we're going to publish in the paper.
Certainly, but not most likely. Okay. So a dollar four for M and O and INS is eighteen, eighteen cents, which is debt service. Any other questions? Current rate is exactly the same, so. So no changes or no anticipated changes unless Dr. Bright finds a bunch of money and we can lower that between now and our August date to approve that. But this helps us meet specific state guidelines as far as posting's concerned. So we have a motion to approve?
Move to publish the maximum maintenance and operation rate to be adopted as one oh four as part of our budget, and the maximum interest and sinking fund tax rate to be eighteen cents. I'd also move to set August twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen as the date to conduct a public meeting to discuss the school's district budget and tax rates.
Second.
Thanks. We have a motion from Mr. Dendron, a second from Mr. Parker. Any other board comment or questions? Public comment? Thanks, Jeff, for your hard work on this, and I know, you know, every year we think we might have to have an increase, but thus far, because of the management within the district and the things that the state's provided, has somehow been enough. So thank you. Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is obviously the largest piece of our budget moving forward, and I think Dr. Bright's got a presentation for us on our compensation proposal.
Yes, sir. Thank you. It's a great pleasure of ours, as administrative team, to come before you tonight and offer a compensation package for our employees in the next school year. A lot of school districts around the state don't have the luxury of doing what we're about to do tonight. So I think, as you said, there's been a lot of work in the past, from the board standpoint and administrative standpoint, to make this happen today. So first, let's talk about our, our pay plan. We are, under a pay plan that's created by the Texas Association of School Boards, hundreds of districts around the state use this model, and it's probably been in place about the year before I got here, so about fourteen, fifteen years now, that's been in place in San Angelo ISD. We update it regularly. We've had two or three really deep reviews of the pay plan over the years, and, and like I said, it served us well over, over time. So here's two, actually, two actually strong items we need to consider. One is, our pay plan is not a fixed pay plan where you can, there are no guaranteed raises in our system. Whenever we can offer a raise, it's because we're taking fiscal responsibility and making sure we can afford it before we put it out there on the table for the board to consider. So fiscal responsibility is very critical in this area. I'll remind you, I think I gave this to you last week, and it's also attached in your board booklet. I think we've been very fortunate, this shows ten years of salary increase history. For nine of those ten years, we've been able to give some type of modest salary increase each year. The one year that we did not is because the state cut five point four billion dollars out of public education, and that year we had a salary freeze. But I'm also proud to say that even through all ten years, we have been able to bring a balanced or surplus budget to our community each one of these times. So we appreciate that, and thank you for supporting us along the way. As far as compensation plans go, many of you have seen this before, our efforts are to recruit and retain quality employees, and we hope our compensation plan will do that. Once they get here, we're going to invest in them through staff development, whether it's professional staff development, or our skill development through our trades, or just leadership development in general. But we're going to invest a lot of money in, in our staff, and we want to make sure we can keep them as long as possible. Second, agree or disagree, we believe that it does recognize and reward employees when you offer a pay increase. You thank them for their commitment to the district, and for, you know, believing in us and coming back and wanting to work every day with the children, as Rick mentioned just a little bit earlier. So what are we looking at this school year? First, we want to talk about the T family. You have a chart in your packet that explains what the T family is. I would say probably a little over half our employees belong to the T family. Most of them are teachers, about nine hundred fifty-ish are teachers, but in all, certainly over a thousand employees in this T family. So you have a list of those people in your packet. So here's what we're offering this school year. We're wanting to offer a fifteen hundred dollar general pay increase to each member of the T family. We frame that as one hundred fifty dollars a month, because as you've heard before, not all people in the T family are teachers, and not all people in the T family work ten months. Some, in fact, you see multiple calendars, any from ten and a quarter, ten and a half, eleven and a half, all the way to twelve-month contracts within the T family. So whatever their contract is, we're looking at one hundred fifty dollars per month salary increase. Okay, we good with that? Okay, next, this one's very exciting, and this will be a defining moment in our district for Mr. Matt Kimball. We'd like to push the starting salary for teachers to forty thousand dollars per year. State minimum's twenty-eight thousand eighty, but as you saw in the Friday fax that I sent you, we're probably a little behind in this area as far as our West Texas peer districts go. They passed forty thousand years ago. And several are well above forty thousand, plus have hiring bonuses, retention bonuses, housing, it goes on and on and on. What this will do is this, this will make us the second highest paying district in Region Fifteen. We're still behind Del Rio, and have been for many years. But I think this is, is a, is a good place to be at this point. It's, it's conservative, it's fiscally responsible, and I'm kind of excited about getting there. We've talked about it for years, and so I think it's time to get there. Forty thousand dollars a year starting teacher salary. When you look at the total cost, all those employees, about one point five million dollars to all funds. We have teachers that are funded in many different areas, Title I, Title II, et cetera. Okay? Next, as you're also aware, we have five families of jobs within our pay system. Each one of the families are split up into what are called pay grades, and every job we have in the district falls into one of those pay grades and one of those families. And it's all out there for the world to see, there are no secrets. And you have this packet in your hands, and it's on our website, like I said, for every employee to look at anytime they'd like. Number of changes on there, you'll find those highlighted in yellow, I hope you'll take time to see that as well. So what's our recommendation for this school year? First off, we're not going to ask for any pay range adjustments. One of the things that we need to probably look at next school year is, are our starting salaries in the right place? This is to be the third year in a row we haven't moved the boxes. Somebody all familiar with that term. So I feel okay right now, but want to look at it again strongly next school year. So here's our recommendation. We're looking at three percent pay and general pay increase for all the employees in every job family. For the general public, y'all are well aware of this, but for the general public, when we say three percent, it is not three percent of their salary. It is three percent of the midpoint of their pay grade, which for some will be more than three percent, and for others, it'll be less than three percent, depending on where they are in the box at the time, above or below midpoint. Cost of that proposal is nine hundred nine thousand dollars, and that includes all funds, which would include Head Start, food service, and the title funds. Next thing we'd like to look at is our health insurance. TRS is basically a self-funded insurance program, and they're in a tough situation. They're falling farther behind. And so they have changed contribution rates and benefit structures, again, to try to at least bring it back under control. I don't know if they can or if they will. You know, there were some efforts this last school year to take some of the larger districts in the state and boot them out of active care. So we may see that again next legislative session. But for now, we're still in. New rates came out June second, and I shared those with you. This will be a little bit tough to see, but you have it in your board packet. The top chart shows how our employees have selected their different coverages. I would say, you know, out of about two thousand twenty-five employees, there's roughly, I'm roughing, about seven hundred choose the low, low end, high deductible plan, active care Not too many select active care two, we'll talk about why later. And then we have about, probably less than three hundred in each, well, maybe a little more than three hundred, three fifty-ish, three seventy-ish in each of the last two choices, which is TRS Select and Scott and White, which is a strong program here with Shannon. Also have shared with you some of the price increases, and the first one is on HD one, which are going to jump about three percent on employee only, and you can read the chart yourself. In some of the other plans, the increases are a little more dramatic. You see in active care select, anywhere from six to sixteen percent in an increase in employee premiums. Active care two, one point nine to twenty-five percent increase on the family plan. And the Scott and White plan, five point nine percent across the board increase. Now also, remember, there were some changes in, in benefit structures as well. They increased out-of-pocket expenses on several of them, et cetera. So where does that leave us? Well, let me, let me first say, on active care two, and we talked about this last year, I think you're seeing the big increases there because they're trying to push people away from the plan. And, and I think they're trying to drive everybody toward HD, high deductible plan. That's my personal opinion. And so I think you're going to continue, continue to see that, and you're going to continue to see people move away from active care two over the next few years. Probably get down to just three plans. Here's our recommendation. First, we do believe it's still important to offer a no-cost plan to our employees. And whether they take it or not's a different story, but we're going to, as we increase the contribution from three fifty to three fifty-five a month, which will allow them to buy, to buy the HD plan for the, for employee only. If they choose another plan, the district will contribute three fifty-five a month toward that plan. Okay? That cost, you know, you can do the math, a little over two thousand employees, five dollars each is about a hundred twenty-two thousand dollar budget impact. Okay? Next, we have been very fortunate over the past few years to offer an insurance supplement to help our employees get by. It's been five hundred, it's been seven fifty, I believe, I have to go back and look at the history. It's been a thousand several times. We think it's time, we talked about this last year, that we probably need to start weaning ourselves off of that, because it's not guaranteed money. Abilene ISD last year offered six hundred dollars a year as an insurance supplement, they pulled the whole thing this next school year, according to Melissa Erby, who I spoke with last week. So I think it's time we start falling back, that's about a million dollar savings to the district in the budget, and we felt like we wanted to put that towards salaries, permanent salaries, rather than the one-time supplement. So this cost for all the employees, if they took in, if they took, and they're all eligible, basically, is one million forty thousand dollars. So even if they don't take the insurance, if they're eligible, we allow them to accept the supplement, if they work within the parameters of our September first to November timeframe. Okay? All right. What are the maximum costs of this plan? It's, it's real money, it's three point five eight million dollars, cost of this compensation proposal. But the thing that I really have to dig into is, what are the costs to the general fund that we have to be able to sustain year after year after year? That's about two point two one million. And you can see, if you take the million dollars insurance supplement out, there's your. So we think it's affordable. It's fiscally responsible, we're living within our means. And as I just mentioned, we have to be able to sustain these costs over time, because I promise you, it doesn't look like the state's going to be handling us any new money anytime soon. So we have to go into this thinking that they will not. Now, if they do, that's a bonus. Okay? But let's go into it as if they will not offer any new dollars. I think it's fiscally responsible, I feel really good about the, the recommendation we have on the table. I think our employees will appreciate it, and, and I think it'd be good for our district. Also attached to the agenda is a stop-in schedule, extra duty and stop-in pay schedule. Patty Griffin has worked very hard for years to get this under wraps. It's taken five or six, seven years to finally get a good handle on it, and it looks good. There are a number of changes in there that are highlighted in yellow, if you have any questions about those, please ask, we'll be happy to try to answer those for you. So at that point, at this point, do you have any questions or comments, maybe something I left out you think the general public needs to hear, or just questions in general?
I have a question, and I may have missed it because I was taking notes, but did you say when that five hundred dollar insurance stipend was going to be paid?
Yes, we'd like to pay it in the December paycheck, one time.
And then for our Head Start employees, Jeff, you know, I was going to ask you that anyway.
I'm glad you did. Because after I finished, I said I left out Head Start. So thank you for saying that. All right. So Head Start's going to receive a one percent COLA, we just approved it. So what we will want to do is, we'll give Head Start two percent on our side, and they'll get the one percent COLA to make them the whole three percent. Okay?
Jeff, we've had this information for, you know, in a couple of weeks, and I think all of us are pretty familiar with our, our model.
Could I add that even with this proposal, we plan on bringing you a surplus budget to the table in a couple of weeks to look at? I'm going to, don't hold me to it, I'm going to say at least two and a half million surplus budget, which we'll be able to look at, we'll wait for enrollment to come in, we'll look at, see what kind of capital outlay items we can fund with that extra money. So it's definitely affordable.
How much more did you say it would be?
Did I say one million?
I don't know. I just.
Two point, I, I'm thinking it's going to be at least two point five million surplus.
And you, you mentioned something right there, and how do you, you must feel pretty good about it, but our enrollment, I know it went down slightly this year. And how, are you projecting that we're going to be flat, or we're going down some, or?
I have to go back and look, but I think I dropped twenty-five in my estimate, I dropped another twenty-five kids. We have, we get certified tax values tomorrow on the twenty-fifth, but we've had preliminary certified values for a month. So if anything, I think they'll jump a little more, which will benefit us. So I feel very good in our revenue estimates at this point.
What's the term you just used, certified what?
Certified property values. Comes from the appraisal district.
Okay. But what's that have to do with enrollment?
Well, it's a combination, remember, we got to look at property taxes and our tax collections, and then our enrollment drive, our ADA drives the funding. And so as far as enrollment goes, I've estimated, I think, a twenty-five student loss for next year, which I feel is safe. And even with that twenty-five student loss, we're looking at about two and a half millions.
Well, I've learned over the years, we've trusted you, and it's, and it's done us well to trust you, so I'm not trying to, in any form or fashion, give you the third degree, but it's just. but it's just, I don't know. I, I assume that whatever gains we had from the oil ended and whatever losses we had from that have ended, or in your projections that, and then I don't know what else you do, whether you look at birth counts over the years or, or what you do to know whether our classes are going to be flat or whether it's people moving in from, you learn that from the chamber. I, I don't know how you do it, but you've done a great job. But you're, you're, the point is you've studied it and you feel pretty confident where we're going to go with it. So I just don't, the only things that can affect us, that you've taught us over the years, is that either something happens with state funding or something happens with our enrollment are the only things, are the, are the main things that can affect what our budget's going to be. And over the years, we've not had any real surprises, so I'm, I'm going to continue to trust you on that, but...
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. There's a lot of people having put into this. We, you know, we talk about it among our staff. We have people around the state that look at our templates and, and make sure we're doing things right. Feel confident with them, you know, if, and I think we have enough cushion right now that we can absorb, even if I miss it, about 25 or 50 kids, we're okay. That just means we'll come back and not have as big of a capital outlay list, but I feel confident we're going to come in with surplus budget starting off. We'll know the first day of school where we're sitting.
Yeah. Yeah, and you mentioned capital outlay list. We never even addressed that until we're pretty sure about what our, our student population's going to be.
That's right. Our CAT team has already met and vetted out the, the list. It was a little less than 2.5 million actually. So we're ready, you know, when it's time, the time's right, we're ready to bring it to you and say, let's go.
But we'll wait until we get, you know, have some confidence in our, the estimate of what we have as far, as far as student population.
Yes, sir.
Yes, you can ask all you want.
One more question for you. We talked a little bit about this last week, but I don't remember what we, what we finally said. Any day now, I guess the legislature is going to be deciding on whether or not they're going to mandate a $1,000 increase for all teachers. And so I was wondering how that would affect the raises that we're looking at giving tonight.
Three things can happen. Here's what I think the more likely thing's going to happen, if it, if it happens at all, that any kind of $1,000 increase will be, looks like it may be tied to seniority, like certain level of experience will get $600 certain, and I don't see that happening until the 18, 19 school year. So that'll give us a year. I think there's a lot of pressure on the legislature right now to not put another unfunded mandate upon our local taxpayers. I hope that's starting to resonate with some of them. And so I think we've got that in our back pocket. And then the third one, if they require a $1,000 raise this school year, don't believe it's going to happen. I think there's going to be enough pressure on them to say, if you've already given 1,000, you don't have to do another 1,000. There are districts around like Lubbock that only offered 500. They would have to pony up some more. So I think that's one of the three scenarios that will happen. I think most likely, if it happens, it'll be 18, 19.
Yeah, and Jeff, I know historically we've looked at a number of districts that we compare ourselves head-to-head to, and we've had difficulty doing that with starting salary, especially because Odessa, Midland, and Lubbock are part of that group. But I know this last year, Abilene, you know, went above $40,000. So when we look at districts that we have traditionally compared ourselves to, you know, we have to make that type of, of an adjustment if we want to continue to maintain a quality staff. And you did mention that we, we're the second highest in the region, but when you look at the districts that are of size in West Texas, any, any large district, they're paying at or above where we are. So in order to keep people here, get a lot of teachers out of Angelo State, and in order for us to keep them in town, we need to compensate them at least fairly.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate y'all taking the opportunity to increase at this particular time.
Abilene's actually going to 44,000 a year, starting teachers next school year. As we talked about before, the Metroplex, Frisco's of the world, they're pushing past 50,000 a year for beginning.
As, as are Midland and Odessa.
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, so. But it costs, costs a little more to live in each of those as well. Costs more to live in Metroplex and certainly more to live in Midland, Odessa, so. But I mean, I, I think the biggest concern moving forward is the whole TRS deal and, you know, how, how much insurance is going to cost for our employees moving forward because it doesn't look like they've, they're having a reduction in any of their claims.
It's been difficult because I'm sure there are employees that we have, you know, we've offered small modest raises over the years. I'm sure there's an employee that can say, hey, four years ago, my net check was this and here I am four years later with all these raises and I'm even or maybe just a little better or maybe a little worse.
Yeah.
That's what's happening in the market.
But that's not unique. I mean, in, in the, in the private sector, it's, you know, as extreme or more extreme as far as insurance cost.
I'm just glad we're able to offer what we've been able to offer. And thank you for it. Mr. Dindel?
Jeff, I know that, I know our offer is 40,000 and, and we do pay insurance for the employees, but I think Abilene does not pay for single coverage for their employees, do they? Or they, they make a contribution, but it's still not the full amount, so it kind of washes in the, in the end run sometimes.
I won't say yes or no to what you just said.
Okay, all right. Well, I know some of the districts don't provide...
You're right. The minimum, the minimum is 225 a month. The districts, and there are districts that only contribute to 25 a month.
And I'm not sure about Abilene, so I'm going to take that off the table, but I know there are districts within the area that we compete at that don't pay the, the full employee benefit for the single, single employee.
Any other questions? So we need to vote on this this evening, Jeff?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay.
That, you know, that's 85% of our budget's finished.
Yeah. Yeah, we usually have this discussion, I mean, we kind of let it slip up on us because usually we have this discussion at our pre-agenda, you know, in, in July, and then we can approve it at our, our regular meeting. So tonight we kind of combined both, but as I mentioned, we, it's, as, it's a public discussion that we're having this evening, but we've had the materials for a couple of weeks for the board team to look at. So I think everybody feels comfortable with that, so.
Just, just one comment because I just texted her to ask this, but my daughter just graduated from University of Texas, education major. She wasn't ready to come back home. She just took a job in Midland and she's getting over 49,000 starting and health insurance is covered. So I know we're behind and now, now I'm concerned if we'll ever get her back home, you know, but that's a big pay cut to come back, even with us saying we're going to be 40,000, so. Well, I don't have my computer, but I will make the motion that we approve the compensation increases that have been outlined by our administration for the 2017, 2018 school year. Second.
Thanks for having a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Dindel. And I'll go through that just so everybody knows publicly what we're approving. We're approving a starting salary of $40,000 and minor adjustments to our hiring schedule for new employees in the T-family. Again, the T-family's primarily composed of teachers, but there are other individuals in that family. We're also approving a, or the motions to approve a $1,500 general pay increase for returning employees in the T-family. We're approving a 3% midpoint pay increase for eligible employees in the administrative professional class, the Head Start and Early Head Start class, information technology, clerical and paraprofessional, and manual trade job families. So outside of the teacher class, that pretty much covers all of our other classes and we're proposing a 3% midpoint increase there. We're proposing that the increase, the district increased the insurance contribution from 350 to 355, so a slight increase there of $5. Excuse me, we're also proposing a $500 health insurance supplement to help employees with an increase in their TRS active care premiums and, and that's regardless of whether they take active care or not. Jeff and I had a conversation before our meeting started and the definition of a, of full-time employees, a little interesting that it's 10 hours a week, but that helps cover people like cafeteria workers and, and bus drivers and things like that. Ours usually work about 20 hours a week, but they are eligible for that health supplement of 5,000, $500 as long as they work more than 10 hours. And then the final is a revision to the district's pay plan, including temporary seasonal extra duty positions and stop-ins that, that we've, I think we all have in line with a number of other districts. There's districts that pay those people a lot of money too, band directors, assistant coaches, own, own offensive and defensive coordinators, you know, all different types of people that get stop-ins. And I think we've done a good, good job of trying to align those stop-ins with competitive districts as well. So that's our motion. Do we have any other board comment or questions? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Jeff, for your team and y'all's work on that and, you know, I feel confident in, in not only our, our budget, but also the number of students that we're projecting that will show up. So I think we're going to have more based on our public relations campaign. I'm feeling pretty good about that, so maybe we'll have some additional students. Our next item is to consider the charge for our facility planning committee and Dr.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff. We've talked about this for a couple of months at least. Any questions or comments concerning our charge to the facilities, the long-range facilities planning committee? Or is, we have to have an acronym for that, so it's the LRFPC.
It's easier for me to say that.
Absolutely. That's what I say. So, so any, we have a motion to approve that charge.
Move to approve the charge for the long-range facilities planning committee.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Mazzell Flint and we have a second by Dr. Kingman to establish a long-range facilities planning committee that adheres to the goal and charges and parameters outlined in the attached document. Are there any other board comments or questions? Public comment? So you think we can have four to six meetings? That's a fair timeframe for us to have four to six meetings if we start. So we're going to convene that committee September probably, Carl?
Now, after the official charge tonight, we are, somebody has gathered names and we'll continue to do that, but we will be meeting, we'll, publicly, in the next two weeks and then we will trust the committee off the mound. And again, it could be four to six or more or less. So we will be looking for assistance to the health guidance committee and to lead that committee to the law.
Okay. Other questions? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. That covers our board business except for our announcements. We have a strategic planning session. That's for board training, August 3rd, 2017, beginning at 5:30. I appreciate Becky's help with that. We've gotten, and Carl, we've asked Dr. Jenny Preston and an associate of hers to come in and do some board training and strategic planning for our board team. So I'm, I'm really excited about working with Dr. Preston. She has an outstanding reputation. We have a board workshop on the 7th. August is a real busy time for our board team, so we have a workshop on the 7th. We have a special finance and pre-agenda workshop on the 14th. We have convocation on August 15th. Our regular board meeting is August 21st and our special meeting to adopt our budget that we set this evening, as far as our tax rate is, and adopt our budget, which Dr. Bright promises will be a surplus budget, is August 28th of 2017. So we have a number of dates in, in August.
We got everybody to 17.
Oh, I skipped 17, I'm sorry. We're not through. I put an X there, but we were almost through. Thanks, Bill. We do need to consider a nomination of Region 15 candidate for position on Tasby's board. We've got a, I think in each one of our package, we had a list of each one of those candidates. There's three candidates. One from Early, I think, and one from Del Rio. And where was the third one from?
Coleman.
Coleman, okay? So, and then I think at our station, we, at our place here, we had a letter from someone recommending. So I would entertain a motion if anyone would like to do that, to nominate someone as the representative on Tasby Board from Region 15. The current representative, I believe, is, is Mr. Mesa, right? So anyone wishing to make a nomination? Thanks, Bill, for reminding me. So it's Raymond Mesa from San Felipe, Del Rio, which is a consolidated school district in Del Rio. Becky Dobbins from Coleman ISD and Robert Wade from Early ISD. I think all of them appear to be very qualified. Ms. Dobbins is...
Ms. Dobbins is very active and a former superintendent. And then Mr. Mesa's been a board member, as well as a board president and current representative for Region 15. And Mr. Wade, looks like he's had extensive experience in the school systems as well.
Okay, I was going to make a motion to nominate Raymond Mesa from San Felipe, Del Rio.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos. Do we have a second? I'll second that motion. So we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos, and a second from Mr. Lehman, to nominate Raymond Mesa to represent Region 15 on the Tasby Board. Any other questions or comments concerning our motion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Our motion passes. Thanks, Bill, for reminding me of that. I was so excited about our limited agenda, that our limited number of meetings, I wanted to go ahead and cover that. Anybody have any items that we need to place on our agenda for future consideration? If not, and here are no objection, we'll stand adjourned.